Okay, I'd like to call the order, the Phelpsville Springs School District's August 17th, 2020 Board Meeting. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
May I have a roll call, please? Sarah Butler, district clerk.
Sherry Sharbin, board member.
Andrew, board member.
Todd Freeland, board member.
Matt Sickles, superintendent.
Amber Welks, board member.
Tracy Altman, board member.
Jake Hamadon, board member.
Ryan Davis, board member.
Tracy Marshall, district manager.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Subvo.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. May I have a motion for the consent agenda items, A through F, a block if there are no...
Subvo.
Objection.
Objection. Can I have a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Presentation, reopening plan, Mr. Sickles.
Go ahead and take this off. So I have a couple of presentations tonight. The first will be lengthy. It's to present the reopening plan for the Phelpsville Springs School District for the 2021 school year in response to the COVID-19 crisis. The plan has been posted on our website since July 31st as required, but continues to go through revisions and updates as we respond to the guidance, fill out more details, and so on. But since there is a motion later in the agenda to approve the plan as presented and to authorize changes as needed to keep up with any changes in the guidance, I thought it was appropriate to present, offer the opportunity for questions. I've invited the administrative team and some others to be with us tonight. It's been a while since they've been with us. I think February was probably the best time. You've seen many of them, but I asked them to be here for two reasons. One, each of them played an integral role in developing this plan, and I can't thank them enough for that. But also, I wanted to give the board an opportunity to recognize and thank them for all their hard work. So as we go through that, hopefully we will have that opportunity. But this has been a huge, huge undertaking to take guidance, 143-page document, and a 23-page document, and in two weeks turn that into a planned reopening of schools, which was just perfectly passed, and it could not have happened. But on our administrative team, we're also joined by Mike Resett, our director of facilities, our boss, and our communications director, not with us, but also very important in the process, was Kenny Rell, our director of communication, and Jill Swarpe, our director of food service, and so many other staff members, our committees, and parents, and just so many stakeholders who helped us get to this point. So I just want to start with the goals that shaped our thinking and our work throughout the process. First and foremost is to protect the health and safety of students and staff. I've said many times, I think to this group, but to others as well, that this is before anything else, and it's been an exercise in public safety. We are in a public health crisis, and the health and safety of our students and staff have to be at the forefront of everything we do this year. Another goal is to provide an equitable and high-quality education for all students under difficult, changing circumstances. We know circumstances are changing. We know that this plan could be forced to shift into a whole new year at any moment, depending on how COVID-19 develops, executive orders from the governor, and any number of circumstances could cause us to change. But regardless of what model we're in, we have to be striving for the highest, most, the highest quality education we possibly can for all of our students. We need to comply with the guidance from the Department of Health, the Department of Education, and the CDC. We seek to return all grade levels and student populations to as much in-person instruction as possible as soon as safely possible. I've heard that theme a lot through the presentation, because safety is going to dictate the pace at which we hopefully bring more grade levels back. We need to close achievement gaps and both reverse and prevent student regression. We know that there was student regression as a result of the closing in March. We need to close those gaps, and we need to work to prevent further regression, as many of our students are going to be in full remote learning, at least to start the year, and all of our students will be engaged in at least summer remote learning, probably for an extended period of time. We seek continuous improvement. We know that this plan is not ever going to be perfect. We know that we can't foresee every challenge we may face, and as we write these procedures and protocols, we're doing it with no experience or context from the past. So we may get into it and realize, wow, we thought that was going to work. It didn't. We need to adjust. So as we've all said throughout this process, we just need to strive to be better tomorrow than we were today, and have that be our goal throughout. And then finally, to provide transparency and communication to all stakeholders, and I think we've been very much committed to that through town hall meetings and committee meetings, all sorts of communications. We realize the past and why it's ahead, and we know that our community needs to believe in what we're doing and understand what we're doing, whether they agree with it or not. So a general overview of the, of the plan is given our specific constraints in Midlakes, and I'll get into those in a little bit. 100% in-person instruction for us just is not possible under the, under the Department of Health and State Ed guidelines. And that specifically has to do with space. Many of our classrooms, all of our classrooms in this building especially, max out at an occupancy of about eight to 10 students. So immediately, you know, that puts us into the hybrid model at best. Some of our secondary rooms, we may be able to get to 13 or 14 kids, but those are also, you know, at that level, you have higher class sizes with singleton courses. You may have class sizes of 28 to 30 in some courses. So 13 to 14 doesn't always get you to where you need to be, and we don't have a lot of those rooms. So space is a big challenge. 100% remote instruction is available as an option to all families. We heard this loud and clear from our families, and we've had many. I would say we may be approaching 20% are, are opting for 100% remote. We understand that families are all over the board in terms of their feelings about sending their children back to school, and thought it was important to offer that option. They do need to commit for at least to try and master any kind of K6 level in a quarter of the time at the secondary level for planning purposes, and space may be a factor when they, if, if they seek to return to the hybrid model later on. The hybrid model is two weeks, two days a week on campus for in-person instruction and three days a week in remote instruction. So we'll have a Monday, Tuesday group who's in person Monday, Tuesday, remote Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and a Thursday, Friday group who's remote Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, in person Thursday, Friday. Wednesday will be a remote day for everybody. There will be substantive interaction between teachers and students on that day. That's also a day for us to engage in deep cleaning of the buildings as we're about to switch cohorts of students. It's an opportunity for professional development, staff meetings, grade level department meetings, additional teacher planning time, and just overall adjustment, because we may find in any given week that what we did on Monday and Tuesday needs to be improved before Thursday and Friday. And that may be on the instructional level, or it may be on the administrative level as we encounter obstacles. So Wednesday's going to be an important day. According to the state guidance, districts, if they can't bring everybody on campus for in-person instruction, have to prioritize our most vulnerable populations, those being our youngest, our students with disabilities, and our English language learners, and you'll see how we've done that. We know right now that our, the number one concern of many families is which cohort are my children in? Are they a Monday, Tuesday kid, or are they a Thursday, Friday kid? The team is working diligently right now to try to answer that question. It's a complicated one. We had to first find out which parents were, and our kids were 100% remote, and we're still getting those. They have to be kind of subtracted off the top, and then class sizes have to be rebalanced, because one third grade class may have 10 remote kids, another may only have two, but we have to balance class sizes and rearrange things, just as an example. Then we have to, you know, we have to balance class sizes and bust them. So we're getting close. I think a lot of progress has been made, but it's still going to be a little bit. We'll get that information out as soon as we possibly can, because we know families need to make plans. We are going to start with only UPK through third grade in the hybrid model, and all other grades four through 12 in 100% remote form. Now, I know that that isn't loved by many and has an impact on childcare and other things. However, there are so many new procedures and protocols, so many time-consuming things, space-consuming things, and staff-consuming tasks that need to be worked out, that we don't want to overcommit to too many grade levels that we can adequately support, keeping them healthy. So we're starting with UPK through third grade with the hopes that we find that our capacity is in good shape and that we can add grade levels. Many people want to know, what is the timeline for adding the next grade level? We don't know. Until we see it, until we have enough data to, to base a well-informed decision on, we don't know. You know, we, we need, you know, if we have, if the first two days of school go really good, because everybody's on their best behavior, there may be a lot of pressure to, let's bring in that grade. Two days is not a, a good sample size when everybody's on their best behavior. We need for people to be comfortable, have some bumps, and then get a true sense of what we can support with space, time, and staffing. We are going to bring any of our K-12 students with disabilities who are assigned to 1211 or 1511 special class settings, we're going to bring them on four days a week. This goes along with the state guidance prioritizing our most vulnerable populations. So they'll be in person Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and remote on Wednesdays. Students with disabilities who are assigned to the consultative to direct model or the resource program model will receive services remotely or in person when they're in the hybrid model, but we're also pursuing opportunities for additional in-person instruction as well. Some of that's going to be through consultation with the CSE office. Related services like occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech-language counseling will be provided through a combination of remote and in-person delivery, regardless of whether the student is in 100% remote or in a hybrid model. And we're going to try to maximize the hybrid model for in-person services, but there will be other students who come in just for related services. Our English language learners will attend in-person instruction up to two days a week according to their needs. So some of our English language learners may already be included in the populations that are going to be on campus two to four days a week, so they're already being served. But we will also, those who aren't in those grade levels will be on campus at least two days a week, and those schedules are still to be determined. Part of the overview at this time, there are still no inter-scholastic sports authorized in New York State. We know that's tremendous hardship and disappointment to many of our student athletes and their families. We will monitor that. There are proposals out there should sports be authorized, but right now, we have no timeline for that. Decisions about extracurricular activities are being evaluated. There will be extracurricular activities. We just don't know which ones yet, because we have to evaluate which ones can be delivered most effectively in the hybrid and remote models. Some of them just aren't suited for either and may not run at first, but we'll continually evaluate that. Our reopening plan will undergo constant evaluation and updates, again, that spirit of continuous improvement as we look at what we're doing and try to make it better. All grade levels must be prepared to go 100% remote at any time for a variety of factors. Those might be local factors, or they may be factors coming from the state law. But as made clear to us in our planning, that we had to have a remote plan posted on our website, should we have to go immediately to 100% remote forever. I talked quite a bit about constraints that we face, and the three major constraints, again, are space, time, and staffing. Six feet social distancing is the minimum, and that limits many of our rooms to eight to 10 kids. Again, there are a few rooms where maybe it's more, a little more than that. More standard-sized classrooms really don't solve our problem. I've gotten that question a lot. You know, why aren't you using the classrooms from the other grade levels or classrooms that Bosse uses? Well, the theory then would be to take, say, a second grade class, put half in one room, half in the other, but now you need a second adult. Times every class at every grade level, you'd need to double your staff, even if you could double your number of rooms. It doesn't solve the problem. The other thing is, if we start using our fourth, fifth, and sixth grade classrooms to bring K through three in every day, then fourth, fifth, and sixth grade never come back to campus, because there's nowhere for them to go. So our hope is to bring more grades on. We want our teachers teaching remotely out of their classrooms so they're, they're ready when, when those kids can come back. Some activities, singing, playing wind instruments, aerobic activity require 12 feet social distancing, which is an even bigger challenge, and that may send a lot of activities outside or to our largest spaces. Time is a constraint, temperature taking, health screenings, extra cleaning. Anytime a group of kids moves from one room to another, that takes time. It also takes staffing. So until we start doing this with new grade levels, we're not going to know how long it takes. Once we have a handle on that, and what our staffing can absorb, we'll, we'll look at bringing more grade levels back. These are major constraints. Pause for a second. Any questions so far?
Yeah, I'm just curious how many families we haven't heard from yet?
What number of families we haven't heard from? Our, our response rate's been pretty high. We're at about 1,200 to maybe around 1,500 students. So that would mean 150 families in the house. Yeah, 100 to 150 families, and that list is being gone through to, to reach out.
So to say, how are we reaching out to them to...
Right. Yeah, so we're collating that information, and the ESO administration are, are reaching out to those families to, to find out what their opinion is. And, and again, that's why this is such a big undertaking, documenting those cohorts is conscious.
Because we don't, because we, we need those other 150.
Absolutely.
I just, I'm not sure if I'm jumping the gun, but I just wanted to ask, maybe just scheduling-wise, yes, the difference between the two-day and the three-day act of thing?
Yeah, so we'll get into schedules in a minute. That's one of the sections.
So I'm assuming this, but will students that are 100% remote, they'll be able to participate in the clubs and activities?
Yes, absolutely. So anybody who's enrolled, as long as they're not disenrolled, and even by policy, our students who are at home instruction have access to clubs. Not sports, that's a staple, but clubs. So if they're in 100% remote and we have the ability for extracurricular clubs, yes. And if sports were to be approved, also.
Just a follow-up, you were talking about like guidance when kids moving from room to room, like say a child against OT services, like what is the guidance? I mean, is it...
To minimize it. You know, to not eliminate it, but to, to try to limit that as much as possible. We'll get into that as we go through some of the segments. So just alphabetically on the website, this is how we're, we're organized, so I'm just going to go through the headings alphabetically. So unlike the spring, we are required to pay attendance of students, whether they're in person or remote. That's in an effort to raise student achievement, hold students accountable for engagement. We recognize that poor attendance and lack of engagement hinders academic achievement, and we want to develop and will develop individual intervention plans for students if they're not attending or not engaging, but we have to track that attendance and engagement in order to go. So we have a team working on that piece specifically, on how to take attendance and how to track engagement when students are remote. And I know the team is currently having a number of different strategies right now. They're, they were on the phone with Edge Tech for Bosse today, I believe. I'm looking at a number of technological strategies and how to document that, because we have to report it to the state as we would normally report student attendance. So this is all about intervention. We want to track attendance to hold kids academically accountable, keep that rigor up, but then get the right supports in place so that those achievement gaps don't get worse. Bilingual education and oral languages is another piece of the guidance. You recall that additional English as a new language teacher was added as part of the budget process for 2021. That brings us to four full-time ENL teachers based on our student enrollment, so that'll help us be more responsive. Student schedules, both remote and hybrid, have been built or are being built to be required instructional units for any of our students who are previously identified for ENL services. We were not able to offer the state mandated exams. They were canceled last year, so everybody carries forward at their current level until we have an opportunity to reassess through local tools. So as per state guidance, progress monitoring tools will be used to evaluate current proficiency and determine services. All instructional staff are required by State Ed even prior to the pandemic to receive professional development regarding ELL instruction. We are also a lead school in a regional consortium for additional support for English language learners, which will be helpful as well. And like I said earlier, our ELLs will receive additional in-person instruction, minimum two days a week, potentially more as there needs to be. Child nutrition, as you recall, when we closed in March, we were required to continue to provide meals to our students. That continues, but it's much different from the spring. In that case, we were to offer meals to anyone, and they were, we were granted a waiver and were to do that free of charge with full reimbursement. Now, all students will have access to school meals, whether they're in person or remote, but meals will be available at their current prices by prepaid, whether they're in person or at home. No student will be denied meals due to inability to pay, and free of reduced-price lunching will be available, and we're making applications available. All meals will be in round-bag form for health and safety reasons, no serving lines. When they're in person, students will eat in designated areas with minimum six-foot social distancing. They can't take their masks off if they're less than six feet apart. The plan at the K6 level is for students to eat in their classroom where they'll be six feet apart. At the secondary level, that's more difficult because of the transitions between classes. So we will have designated cafeterias, and that's in quotes, because it may be more than our traditional cafeterias. We may be using other, converting other large spaces to cafeterias, and not with tables, but with individual desks to ensure social distance. So certainly, school is going to look a lot different in, in every way for our students. Custodial staff will clean eating areas after each meal period, and then meals will be provided to remote students through an on-campus pickup system twice a week, where they'll get multiple meals, multiple days' worth of meals each time they pick up. For now, we're going pickup only. I think our numbers for enrolled are lower than what they were. We'll see if that evolves over time, and as we look at our capacity of staffing, we will evaluate whether we're able to add delivery later on. But with, you know, hoping to bring more and more students on campus, it's going to get more and more difficult to entertain delivery. And at this point, we're not delivering. We're going with pickup. Communication and family engagement. So feedback was taken from stakeholder groups throughout the development of the plan. All stakeholder groups were involved, even through surveys, town hall meetings, committee meetings, consultations with experts and local officials. It was a very inclusive process, and will continue to be, as this week, you saw the town hall meetings, and we will continue to engage with the community. Multiple communication outlets will be used to educate students, family, and staff about health and safety issues, from the identification of COVID-19 symptoms to what to do about it, where to bring students, proper handwashing, respiratory hygiene, which we'll get into. We'll have signage everywhere as required. There will be resources on the school website. We'll be pushing them out through social media. There will be mass communications. There will be mass communications. I'm sure plenty of "Good afternoon, this is Matt" signals for Midlake's phone calls in my future. We'll continue to engage and collect feedback from stakeholders as well. So not just one-way communication us to them, but from them to us. We need to know how we're doing in the eyes of our students, our parents, our staff members, community members. So there may be more town hall meetings, short surveys throughout the school year. Dedicated email addresses that have already been established will be kept active so people can send us questions on specific topics and we can give them answers as soon as possible. As we can also monitor, because then if we're getting the same questions over and over again from multiple people, then we can look at, well, that needs to be part of a frequently asked questions document or maybe it's time for another town call. So we'll be monitoring all of that. We have many different communication tools that are listed there and we'll make sure that all communications are available in the language we're spoken in. Facilities, health, safety facilities. Where are my health and safety facilities? Come in, hunt down, and Jim. I've been hard at work. Put three of them on it because it's a lot. It has been a lot. Everybody's doing a great job and working together. This is what the work they've done touches upon pretty much what everybody else does. So learning spaces have to be reconfigured to support six feet social distancing. Those three, Light and Soto Crew have been all over Mesrory and setting up that. Others have been jumping in as well. There will be signage posted everywhere, again regarding symptoms, but also hand and respiratory hygiene, which I'll get into a little bit more. Health offices have been reconfigured. Thankfully, it was already a plan here, but it worked out that our two small health offices were turned into regular offices and we're now using what was formerly the staff lunchroom, which is a much larger space as our health office in this building. And that's going to allow for sick and well areas and much more space to operate. But there also have to be separate isolation rooms in each building. I believe it's 222 in this building and 142 in the secondary building. So if any student or staff member identifies with symptoms during school day, they're evaluated quickly by the nurse brought to the isolation room. Symptoms are confirmed. They stay there until they can move, whether on their own accord or a parent picks them up. So lots of reuse of space throughout the district. Cleaning and disinfecting protocols. You can read through there. There's a lot of extra cleaning. We are hiring for a social position that we had planned to absorb through retirement. We're going to add that back in because we're going to need as much help as we can. So it's all there and the information will be available for cleaning logs, cleaning supplies. Our instructional staff will be assisting with some light cleaning between the transfer of students back-to-back and back-to-back periods. But all the deep cleaning and regular cleaning will be handled by our restful staff. Supplies of PPE are being augmented and diversified for specific roles and needs. So Lightning and Tracy have been hunting down all sorts of PPE from every source they can find because we're competing with 700 districts in near-staging districts around the country for the same things. And there's different personal protective equipment that are needed for different job descriptions. We need to be prepared to provide cloth-based masks for our staff at minimum depending on the job description, other PPE, and to have backup disposable masks for our students on buses and classrooms and offices, anywhere that they may find themselves with a broken mask or without a mask or soiled mask. So and not to mention cleaning supplies, hand sanitizer, and so many other things. Drinking fountains. We'll be replacing many of our hallway water fountains with bottle filling stations to, you know, just stop the spread of germs. We won't be using the drinking fountains in the classrooms. We'll be using bottled water whenever necessary. Ventilation. We're working with Trane to upkeep our HVAC systems. Filters are being replaced according to, or in many cases, in excess of manufacturer recommendations. Classroom windows will be open when possible. Unfortunately, in an air-conditioned building, both buildings, the windows that open are emergency windows with no screens. So we'll be limited there. But we will be monitoring our HVAC systems throughout the school year, throughout the reopening and beyond. School safety drills is another aspect of facilities. So we still have to do all our mandated fire drills, lockdown drills, et cetera. Safety timelines, even more aggressive timelines, actually. And with students in the hybrid model, we're going to have to duplicate drills so that students in both cohorts get them. And if students aren't 100% remote, we have to provide instruction in those safety drills, even if they're not here to practice them. And when we do practice them, we have to practice them with social distancing, but educate them as to what they would do if it were an actual emergency. So we're going to practice it six feet apart. But if the more real social distancing takes a backseat to immediate physical distancing. So everything, everything we do is going to be good. Health and safety is about twelve sides, guys? It's not twelve, right? I think it's four. Staff training. After this, I'm going to tell you about changes to the school calendar. And the whole purpose of changing the school calendar is to make that entire first week with four days of September available for staff training. Staff have to be trained in recognizing and responding to symptoms, teaching good hand washing, hygiene, and respiratory hygiene, so many other things. And it's been, and our clean staff has to be trained, bus drivers, food service. There's just a lot of health and safety training. Physical distancing, again, is a fundamental component of our plan. I think I've talked at length about the social distancing requirements. Face coverings will be required whenever individuals cannot be six feet apart. Okay? And the whole, if they're less than six feet apart or if we're going to, they're going to spend the majority of their time six feet apart, unless the core activity requires something closer, they have to have their masks on. So we will have mask breaks. They'll have them off when they're eating. But they'll spend a lot of their time with their face masks on. We'll make accommodations. You'll see there are some students who may be medically exempt and if the social distancing becomes more stringent for those students. Okay? And we will provide backup disposable masks for students. Temperature checks and health screens for students and staff. The expectation is that families take temperatures and report those daily before they, through an online tool, before they put their kids on the bus or send them to school. Then that has to be monitored. We're also working on backup measures, temperature screening tools here on campus as a backup measure to that as well. But all students and staff will have to complete health screenings. And of course, anyone who has a symptom will be encouraged and directed to stay home. Certainly, a temperature of 100 or higher has to stay home. Visitors will be discouraged, but if we have vendors or others who have to report to the school that they'll perform a health screening when they arrive. Parents and guardians will be instructed and educated in how to observe for signs of illness. So our social media, school website, mailings, signage will all be used to instruct our families in those things with instructions to keep their children home and report that to the nurse if they're symptomatic. Signage and supplies to promote proper hand and respiratory hygiene. So again, anywhere from washing hands with soap and water for a minimum 20 seconds, washing frequently, using hand sanitizer when soap and water are available, using your elbow, you know, to when you sneeze or cough. All these will be signage and instruction for students frequently. Assessment of those students. Again, there have to be specific procedures. I talked about isolation rooms where students with symptoms will be sent and evaluated until they can be picked up. We have to be prepared for high-risk and medically vulnerable groups. Accommodations will be made as necessary based on medical documentation. And that's really on a case-by-case basis. So that could be pages to list out all possibilities. But that's really a privacy issue that our nurses will deal with in communication with doctors and potentially the local health department. And again, there may be medical exemptions for face masks, in which case six feet is absolutely required. And, you know, many of the students who attend the Midlake Education Center to BOSIS, we expect to have that modification. So that's something that will have to be in constant confidence as well since we all intermingle on campus. COVID-19 testing. We have to have a testing protocol. This might have been one of the most challenging pieces to come up with, and it's probably going to change. This testing protocol, and it's somewhat big, but it's on the website. But, you know, we're going to be in constant communication with our local health department about suspected confirmed cases and what to do regarding isolation, quarantine, closure, cleaning in classrooms. That's really at the guidance and direction of public health. But as I've communicated with the director of Public Health in Ontario County, she kept getting different guidance and it was changing right up until the moment that we posted. And it could continue to change. So we'll keep the website updated. Symptomatic individuals stay home. Prefer the family physician and encourage to have a COVID-19 test. But that's really a medical decision. If they're not tested as per the physician, there's standards for when they can return to school. If it is a positive test, a positive case, there are very specific guidelines that are beyond our control about isolation, quarantine of the particular student, and potential other exposures. But that will be dictated by the public health department. The other thing to keep in mind, everybody wants to know very specifically, if person X, student, staff member, whatever, or spouse or family member of X is, you know, diagnosed with COVID-19, what happens? It depends on the specific situation. The public health department evaluates the exposure, the circumstances of the exposure, how many degrees of separation, how long was the exposure, was there social distancing? Were there masks on? And they will determine what we do in terms of sending other people home, closing a classroom or a building, or how and when to clean a specific classroom. So that's really something that we are a secondary player in with public health. Contact tracing. Again, this was in the plan and the guidance. But contact tracing is the primary responsibility of contact tracers in the public health department. So we will, again, stay in close communication with the public health department about suspected confirmed cases. And we will support their efforts. We'll use our tools here on campus, anywhere from attendance records, student mandated systems, to security cameras and seating charts that assist with the contact tracing process. But again, we play a secondary role. But very importantly, that last bullet is that we will protect the privacy of individuals when communicating if there was a confirmed case or exposure. We will say, we will contact the family and say, your child was or may have been exposed. But they will not know who tested positive or who the exposure was from. So that's something that we take very seriously and require to be, and may not go over very well for a now unfortunate situation. School schedules. So make sure I answer your questions. I'll go through and then we'll go from there. So again, to start the year, UPK through three in the hybrid model, four through 12 in remote learning. Break grade levels back incrementally based on health and safety. Additional in-person instruction for students with disabilities and English language learners. Based on a youth survey that we did, parent surveys and staff survey, they all overlapped and had very consistent feedback and led to the following conclusion. First, schedules have to promote safety. Social distancing, mask breaks, limited student movement. How we schedule is going to be based on trying to limit how often kids change rooms. So like at the secondary level, where there's irregular class periods, that's a lot of transitions. So we're going to go to four blocks per day, four classes on one day and a different four on another so that we've cut the number of transitions in half. We'll have more instructional time, fewer times that those rooms have to be cleaned. But then our passing periods have to be lengthened in between to allow for the proper cleaning of those rooms. And then that opens up supervision and social distancing challenges in the hallways. So it every loop the chain reaction and the team is working through all of the details. And it does get more complicated at the secondary level. But we have a little bit more time to see how things go at the younger levels, learn from those experiences, and build our procedures at the secondary level. Consistency. Everybody agreed there needed to be more consistency and predictability for students, families, and teachers. And we want to have consistency across the hybrid and remote learning models and in-person so that, you know, students, whether they're home or here at school, wake up and they know this is when I've got this class this period, and they can follow along. So we're going to work to align remote instruction with in-person instruction so that students who are remote, whether they're 100% remote or if it just happens to be their remote days, they can be following along via technology with what's going on in the classroom. We're working on a lot of different models and working, there's committees working on that, different strategies. Not, there's not going to be one way to do that because we actually provide flexibility for teachers to teach the kids who are in front of them and the courses that they're charged for teaching. But we know that there needs to be consistency. Wednesdays are going to be a little bit different. Might be more pre-recorded with individual or small group supports.[1659.72] or small group supports, and we're also looking at recording of the live instruction too for either students and families to go back and re-watch if there was confusion, or if there are family circumstances or illness where a student couldn't follow along on it, we're hoping that that instruction will be posted for students to watch and hear. These are a lot of details, these are, these represent skill sets that have not have, have been developed in the past, so are we going to be 100% proficient in this? In the first week of school, not even close. Will there be frustrating parents? Absolutely there will be, okay, but we're going to lean in and support our instructional staff with professional development. We're going to be out in front of them with parents, having those conversations, encouraging people to be patient, because again, all we can do is be better tomorrow than we are today. We're going to stumble, and this is hard work. Flexibility, again, we want the schedules to work with no matter what model the kid happens to be in. And then clarity, families need to know what's happening so that they can plan their lives and childcare and other things accordingly. One note, Wayne Figueroa's BOSs, due to the nature of their CTE, their career and technical ed programs, and the size of their spaces and the size of their enrollments, they're able to go 100% in-person, even though our 11th and 12th graders are remote, and they're starting on September 9th, even though our first day of instruction is September 14th. We will support them starting on September 9th, and we will transport them if they're not able to transport themselves, I needed that transportation. Todd, did I answer your questions about scheduling?
For the most part, yes, you know, we'd all love to know the specific time, but I'm sure we'll be.
So we are looking to keep starting end times roughly the same across the board at this point, unless we encounter a reason that we have to adjust. Now, will instructional time get eaten into by all these new procedures that we have to do? Yes, it'll take longer to unload a bus, it'll take longer to load a bus, it's going to take longer to get kids in the building, it's going to take longer to get them out of the building. So those are adjustments within the day, but general pickup times and times are going to be the same, but busing, as I get into transportation, when you look at our max capacity on buses, we're going to have to reroute again because you're going to have many fewer kids on the bus, so we'll get in that room. But generally, we're staying at the same schedule.
So could it follow up, if I was a secondary student, and I produced, say, four classes, so four block classes, it kind of looked like two before lunch, two after lunch?
Is it four lunch, two after lunch roughly? For the secondary, you know, we split, there's three lunches. So we would at the beginning, we'll have lunch of 30 minutes, then class for eating. So there's one rule, I have a class first 40 minutes, lunch of 30, class for dinner, and then one at the end of that class. So we also have to manage space and can't have all the kids or even half the kids eating all at the same time?
So remote learners would just, wouldn't follow the eating schedule?
Well, they're home, making you a lot.
Right, 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 so guess basically.
Yeah, but they'll know what the schedules.
What the times are.
And we may need to adjust passing periods too. We're going, what, six minutes and start, but that may have to be adjusted, instructional time may get shortened, I don't know those periods, if it's a result. And then schedules that I've referenced, I'll put that in the highlights. Social emotional wellbeing, ours versus our own maybe? This has been a challenge for everybody since March, for our students, our staff, our family, and our friends and our staff. We knew, I mean, we've talked about social emotional needs of our students long before a pandemic, March, our pandemic, and we're developing strategies and multi-tiered systems to support, and those needs are only going to increase as a result of this situation. So we are committed to monitoring and supporting our students, but also our staff as well through a number of means. We are instituting multi-tiered systems to support for both in-person and remote students. So MTSS, we have tier one supports, we have a district counseling plan that will be followed for general check-ins and monitoring of students, general different forms of support from routine to a little bit more complicated. There'll be universal screening tools to assess social emotional needs of students and staff, again, part of that collecting information about how everybody's doing so that we can adjust. Is there anything about what we're doing systemically that's adding more stress or trauma that could accidentally happen, and if we're not checking in with our stakeholders, we may miss them? Access internal and community resources for mental, behavioral, and emotional health. All of our staff will receive training from the Trauma Illness Grief Consortium, NIS TIG. We have family access to the Family Support Center, we just ran through the K12 Chief Family Support Center a couple days ago, last week, right? And they'll continue to provide family therapy services remotely until they can switch back. And then the K-12 Character Strong Program with training for students and staff in self-care and stress management. So tier one is things that we're doing for everybody, okay, supports that are in place across the board. Tier two, tier three are for students that still have needs that go beyond those tier one supports, and that's where our pupil support office, our counselors, social workers, school psychologists, working at, in teams to identify students. You know, that attendance and engagement data is going to be critical because poor attendance and lack of engagement can be one of the first warning signs of social emotional difficulties, and we want to intervene early. They'll also identify specific interventions and case managers for students, they'll run skill-based groups and individual counseling in-person or often remotely as needed, home visits by PSO staff with safety precautions in place, and then, God forbid, if necessary, the Trauma Illness Grief Team will go into action should there be an incidence, an individual or community loss for any reason in the coming school. Special education, I touched upon this a little bit, again, student K-12, students score in special class settings, 1211 or 1511 will be on campus in-person four days a week with one day remote. Teachers, students in the consultant teacher resource programs will receive remote and in-person instruction through the hybrid model, but additional in-person instruction may be added in consultation with the CSE office and our colleagues already having those conversations with both parents, but also her special education staff as well. So we may see whether it's on a Monday's day, it's a traditional remote day, we might see some kids who aren't normally on campus getting consultant support in those settings, but that'll be on a case-by-case basis, and parents will be able to ask for special consideration. Again, related services, we talked about, will be offered in both remote and in-person settings, and sometimes depending upon the nature of the service, we may need to use different rooms, they'll be different. Great enough. There's a lot of the special ed that we encourage any family that already do, I don't even need to say it, but to reach out to TMH, she has tremendous relationships with those families, so they're already reaching out there, and she's, she's working with them to find the right supports. Teaching and learning, curriculum and instruction will be aligned horizontally, which means within grade levels and departments, and vertically, which means across grade levels and departments to the New York State Learning Center. We understand we're probably going to have to meet the standard by teaching fewer topics just because of the nature and the limitations of in-person instruction and remote instruction in this setting, but make sure that our instruction is aligned with our experience. There'll be professional development in that alignment process and standards, but also professional development related to remote and hybrid instruction. Grade level teachers will be encouraged to utilize common units, so there's consistency across grade levels whenever possible. Teaching of content and skills consistent across the delivery model so that the students who are learning remotely aren't getting something completely different than the students who are in-person, but that it's continuous and fluid and all fits together. Equity promoted through grade-appropriate assignments, balanced instruction, engaging activities, higher expectations, and academic accountability. We made decisions in the spring very deliberately because of suddenness, sudden onset of this situation, to really let off and be very flexible and their wisdom. And that came at the expense of academic accountability, and I think we felt that at the school level, and I think parents and students felt that as well. So the guidance requires, the experience tells us that we need to increase the rigor accountability across the board. Teachers will be required to communicate and provide useful feedback to students to reinforce learning, so constant two-way communication. For consistency, we want to simplify things for families, students, and teachers, so CSOW will be the learning platform for K6, SchoolAG will be the learning platform, 712 so that families aren't juggling three or four different systems, and we'll provide PD to support that. We want students to have opportunities to collaborate with each other, whether they're in-person or remote or across, you know, we don't want it to just be open up and say, ah, stand and deliver instruction because we're in a certain model. We need to overcome that and make sure that we're providing instructional activities that allow for that collaboration. Again, we're seeking consistent schedules and expectations, families are encouraged to contact teachers and administrators. We can't say enough, don't wait to contact us. Contact the teacher, absolutely, but if you're having difficulty, you're out of a question, don't please ever hesitate to reach out to any one of us. That's a message to all families. There will be technology support and instruction provided on the website and on other means, and then consistent grading practices that promote growth and accountability.
Question, Matt?
Yes.
This might be back to schedule, I'm sorry, I waited on, sorry, but you brought it up again. A student that's Monday, Tuesday, right? What are they expected to do Thursday, Friday? Are they expected to be?
Ideally, to be following along through technology with what's going on in the classroom of the other half of the kids.
So you're expecting teachers to be teaching a lesson to the students in front of them and to the students at home?
Yes, now, there might be different delivery models, and there may be flipped instruction in the way they teach the kids in front of them, maybe a little bit different, and it may be more mini lessons with then opportunities for reinforcement or check-ins both in-person or through remote Zoom breakout sessions. We're still, we have an entire committee dedicated to working through a menu of possibilities so that teachers can lean into a handful of strategies that work, but yes, that's, and we realize that that's a challenge.
Well, then it's a regular classroom, you have a camera.
And we are working on that, that's part of our current purchasing quest.
Right, and so students, students Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday have the same schedule, really, they will have the same day. You know, Wednesday, I know, make me screw you, but Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, you know, they're either here doing the same thing or at home doing the same thing.
Correct.
And then fully online students are also following the Monday, Tuesday.
Exactly. Now, am I going to stand here and tell you that we have that perfected?
Right.
Anybody want to say that? I'm not ready to say that, but that's what we're working towards, and that's really what we heard in the feedback, is that continuity, and in order to hit all the topics and standards and concepts and skills, we need to keep moving in that path, but we're also going to monitor it, get feedback from student parents and instructional staff throughout to find out where the problems are and then readjust. But that's the goal. It's complicated.
Yeah, no, it is.
Okay, so there are some subject-specific challenges, PE with additional social distancing required, so there's going to be a lot of curriculum modification there, if you will be outside as much as the weather allows. Music also with 12 feet apart for singing or wind instruments, that could be happening outside, weather dependent, or using larger areas, and I know that the music department is doing a really good job putting together some ideas that we're going to work with them on, so that's a challenge that lies before us. K6 specials, in order to keep our K6 students stationary as much as possible and not have cross-contamination of common areas, the specialist teachers will be coming to the classroom. That is all, some of those specials rooms are also larger, and that may then allow us to use those to get a couple more kids in the regular classrooms. Because some of the rooms in this building, the way the cubbies and the pods are cut, eight, right, that's out there, so, and that's a problem, so we may be swapping some rooms around. We also need to cut down on shared materials and supplies and make sure those that are necessary are being cleaned routinely, so again, everything about what we do is going to change. Technology and connectivity, you know, we're in pretty good shape, our survey showed, you know, a very small percentage who have Google app reliable on the internet at home, we do have PG hotspot units that we purchased additionally, 250 additional ones in the spring, still available to those families. We also have a meeting set up on Wednesday with a local partner to potentially look at automating local internet access as well. Fortunately, all of our students have a district device, so that's a huge advantage for us as well. And everything we do related to technology has to comply with edLaw 2D, which you've heard a lot about, in privacy and security, which unfortunately just adds hurdles and challenges. We are looking to streamline, just like we're going to just CSOW and SchoolAG, we're streamlining apps and online tools so that people can get good at a few things rather than being torn into, you know, dozens of directions. We're going to provide information and support for families, staff, and students in use of technology. So lots of information posted on the website and other forums and mail call, because we want to support all sorts of instruction that's using technology. Transportation, we're almost done with this presentation. This is a huge challenge, you know, not from the alphabet, I probably should have put this one on top because this is where the day begins, right? And based on the guidance that we have, and I just went back and forth many times, but the current guidance, interpretation of the guidance is we can have one student per seat. If they're, if students are from the same household or daycare, you would go two per seat, but generally speaking, we cap out at 22 students on a 65-passenger bus and 27 on an 81-passenger bus. If there's a student who is medically exempt from wearing a mask, will have to be six feet socially distanced, that then brings that capacity down. So transportation is a challenge, and I know the reason why we're starting with UPK three to work through what that's going to look like and have room in those buses to take on more capacity as we add grade levels. Students and staff will have to wear masks at all times, again, unless they're medically exempt. Masks will be available, backup masks available on the buses, talked about the capacity. Parents and guardians must ensure that students don't board the bus or attend school if they're exhibiting symptoms or have a fever of 100 degrees or higher, there'll be an online tool, and we really need our families to acquire them. Our ability to advance this model depends upon family and student cooperation. Bus routes will be adjusted to manage the maximum capacity of our buses, routes are subject to change as we bring more kids on campus, they may have to be adjusted as we go to manage the maximum capacity on each bus. We're going with one bus run to start with in UPK through three, and as we add grade levels, we expect to have, you know, potentially a second bus run certainly when we get to the secondary level. Airflow maximized on buses using the hatches and windows as weather allows, buses will be cleaned between runs and disinfected at the end of each day, there'll be reloading and unloading procedures for social distancing, that has a time factor. We'll continue to transport out of district placement students, and we will continue to transport our CTE students to the player tactical warehouse center. Questions?
So I have a question about the questionnaire that, the online reporting tool, so obviously there's probably some glitches in that, but like how, how do you know, like, so is a parent expected to fill that up before the kid gets on the bus?
Yes, for each student.
And so that would be tracked somehow?
Yeah, so we're looking at a number of online tools, John is sort of heading up his process and support for Lydia, and we're looking at a bunch of different providers or email tools, possibly Blackboard Messenger, there's a number of challenges. One, any technology tool that we use has to be edLaw 2D compliant for data privacy and security, so that immediately limits our options, and then it has to be feasible. But we need our families to be honest and cooperate, or this won't work. But we are going to have backup procedures here on campus as well for additional temperature checks, but families, and families need to be honest with us too, if they can't meet that standard, then we have to have backup procedures for those families who can't. But if they say they can, we need them to follow through.
So if I wasn't able to get my kid a temperature check or do that tool, I would just let you know, and then when my child, somebody would do that.
Right, I do need to hear that with PTO, right? PTO just donated a sizable donation to purchase thermometers for families who may not have one in the home. So, PTO continues to go above and beyond and support our efforts and we appreciate that. Yeah, we want to open our family as much as possible to perform those checks before they step.
I have a question, just to clarify as far as face masks, face coverings go. So the classrooms are being set up to be socially distanced, correct? So when the students are in class, they're able to remove their masks?
As long as they are stationary, you know, we're hoping that they'll be able to take their masks off from period to time. But we also know that students can be getting around, we have to monitor how that goes. And if there's a lot of commitment, the mask has to be on. So, this is going to be our initial experience for all of us. But any, anytime, they're gonna be less than six feet apart, the mask has to be on. And we have to ensure that they're six feet apart for them to eat or to take mask rings.
Follow-up to that, does that mean teachers have to be stationary in the rooms also?
Again, based, they, if everybody's got their mask on, as the activity requires, they can be postering. We're not encouraging them to be on top of each other, I expect that they, we won't have to worry about that. But the man, it's, it's a given thing between the mask and social distancing.
I mean, so. So they're gonna have their mask on most of the day?
They're gonna be wearing their masks.
Right, I mean, there's so many good teaching strategies that are part of where we're close together, you know, pair of chairs or, or.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and, and that's the challenge. People are gonna have to do that in a lot of ways and I said it on the staff meeting today, just some things that we're just not gonna be able to do. And that, that relates to a lot of different categories, not just teaching strategies. But again, first and foremost, when I started the presentation, this is for health and safety, it's our first. And again, it's why we're starting with social grade levels, we're gonna get it down and evaluate it before we start to let the children learn.
Just a follow-up on that, so basically it's teacher discretion then, as far as whether kids are removing that?
We're gonna be collecting the event, I'm sure they need to have the event on the first day. We're gonna be carrying the jerseys to one part of the one that they.
Some teachers may be more apt to want us to wear them all day, sorry. You know, that's based on personal opinion, that's what it is.
I mean, and I'm reluctant to say discretion because there are requirements. But there will be a variety of ways of managing it and accommodating accommodations. We're also looking at different types of face coverings, some specific types of instructional therapies with transparent. Face masks for speech activities, things like that, but they're not always necessarily appropriate.
Question about the COVID testing. Is, is it confirmed that the school is not responsible to do that test?
We have enough tests. We still not be tested. You would have to apply for waiver, the original guidance specifically planned it that out. Discourage schools, discourage schools from being in that business. The local health department has echoed that, it is not our job.
Thank goodness, I'm a class.
Nor is it our job in most situations, of course, that's a medical decision. And that's where, you know, the physician or the urgent care facility, or in the case of a positive test, that the local health department is going to apply for those certificates. Now, there are a lot of political perspectives going on around that. So could the guidance change and force us into an area that we're not accustomed to?
I know we need more clarity on it, but cost-wise that, that talked about?
Of.
So let's say that somebody does need that chat.
Yeah, and at this point, we're not responsible for that, but that's a very, there are so many questions that are unknown about so many parts of what we're about to do. That till we're in that situation and somebody rules on it, we are.
I have another question, sorry.
No?
You mentioned the attendance being captured and then you also mentioned the engagement piece. You just talked a little about like a measuring tool or how that's gonna be captured.
So, you know, when the kids are in person, that's easy, right? They're here, so they're there in attendance. We, when they're remote, we're looking at, one, you know, how do you track that they're present in the instruction and engaged in it, first of all? Which could be challenging, especially if they're in legitimate circumstances and cause them to have to engage in the instruction after the fact through recordings. So we have to figure out how to capture that. And then, we need to take the actual documentation pieces and be able to merge together in-person and remote record keeping into one centralized place and capture that somewhat after.
I wish, you know, earlier in, right, and I even showed a part where we talked about the new attendance. That's been, that's, they're wanting their, you know, quality engagement. So those pieces were working, they are, these services working on collections for the homeless as well. That actually has a column that is for required to work, a weekly update on how a student is doing to an engagement, whether it be in Zoom. We know we have a student in our class five days a week and we don't get the assignments out. So that's, that's a dependence, but that's not engagement, so we're working on how that helps and fills the difference.
One more, I promise. Can you just talk just a little bit about the four, fourth grade to twelfth grade PE? I mean, with sports not even being talked about, I mean, childhood obesity, hypertension, depression, sleeping habits. PE is a good resource to work against those four of the places.
So hey, while I'm trying to jump in here helping, but there'll be a lot of, obviously, through a whole lot of independent activities. I know even last year, you know, end of last year, where there was less accountability or PE staff had braved out of modeling and encouraging discipline. There's gonna be more accountability for that. And it goes back to the Christmas fun, the fun of brand in terms of engagement and attendance. Students are gonna be held accountable for demonstrating that in their meeting, whatever the course requirements are for them. And if physical activity, in this case, or PE is, is the requirement, then they're gonna have to show up in the, I don't know if you wanna mention any specific strategies.
Some of that might be as far as like, we're talking about logging in, so maybe they log in for that first fifteen minutes. The teacher goes over what they're expected of them for that period of time. I mean, their block schedules, they're gonna have a lot of extra time, so maybe the PE teacher goes through some stuff with them, kind of releases them, lets them do whatever they need to do. Or if they're a sign up for an elective, like this special relative of electives with yoga, so maybe she's just beating them through some yoga and stuff like that. Or they're kind of live through the Zoom or whatever we decide to use for that. But I would say probably most of it is gonna be they're on there for a few minutes, fifteen minutes or so, explaining what they're going through and then they kind of go through and then maybe at the end they touch base with that or they log into schoolag and, and log in what they've done and how they've done it. They still provide that contact back and forth if they have questions about what they're doing. They can still reach out to those teachers, they will be available at times to be able to, you know, keep up with what they're doing.
It's not a perfect system. And I know, I know what you're asking because that accountability piece is going to be difficult, but these are the challenges that we face.
And once we get back to person, then there are also constraints to have, you have to be twelve feet apart if you're gonna do anything. It's a heroic thing, heroic activity or something like that. Yoga's a little bit different because you can still be a little five, six or eight feet apart, but when you start moving around a lot, it's gonna be tough. Hopefully we'll be lucky and we'll have a really good fall and get outside a lot more, create that sort of manager. We've talked about also just making more units, a lot of outdoor units, you know, maybe taking snowshoeing or some of the things like that we could do outside. We have to have, you know, we have to think outside the box and be creative and stuff that maybe we haven't done and that's.
Yeah, I mean, great questions and they all speak to how complicated all these pieces are. And that's why we started off our staff meeting today with a lot of our answers to your questions are, we don't know yet. And that goes back to the transparency, because we're not gonna make up answers if we don't know them. We know that we, you know, overcompensate early, we got our plan, you know, posted on the thirty-first and needs about being soon. But we know that there's a lot that's important and I wanna take that up there. To just, right, you guys. They won't tell you this, they're tired, they're stressed, they're overwhelmed and they're working so hard. To a person and all their teams, you know, they're working with, saying, oh, this is for them. This is such a mind event, so I'm taking. There's been no suffering. And, and they have gone, oh, yeah, I'm proud of all of our, our team, our leadership team. I hope that they're proud of the work they've done, leadership, they can find it to our staff and our students and our families. And I just wanted to give the opportunity to be with them in the back box, but I wanted to be here for me with that person. The tremendous work that they've done, they know there's still a lot more work ahead, which means, you know, grace, you know, in the unstable future and that grace my heart. Because we all have our moments, they come at different times when we each hit the wall and we're trying to pick each other up. But I just wanted to recognize them all, thank you so much for this gathering, for all of your energy.
Yeah, it, it's evident that you put in tons of time and put our kids first and safety first. I know a bunch of us are on the other end, you know, being teachers or instructors at other places, so we're seeing it from all angles and we really appreciate it. And even though it's unclear, it, to me, it's clear, you know, we're moving in the right directions. And the transparency, I know from the people I've talked about, even though they're stressed, the fact that you're listening to them and asking them for feedback has settled them and, and I think that they're coming in as a team with us, so thank you for that.
I also wanna recognize Mr. Board Meeting behind the camera, you know, Henry Tew, and Preston Hatchett, since we closed, and Todd and Sarah, for all that they've done to support these live screen meetings and communications. Everyone has just chipped in, has employed and, you know, all this difficulty.
Yeah, I, the teamwork is, is very evident and it's, I'm, I'm very appreciative of the teamwork that has been so evident from across the board, so, thank you.
Yeah, I got another presentation, I'm trying to make this, but seriously, but in order to support everything that we just talked about.
Would one of you please give a presentation other than?
Go ahead, let's do the calendar.
Or maybe the robo-call or any.
All right, yeah, just, just like. You guys kept asking questions. To make a lot of the things I talked about possible, we are adjusting the calendar. And if there is a motion to approve the amended calendar, if it happened in front of you, it'll be posted on the school website tomorrow. But just quickly to go over the changes, first day of stu, of, of school for staff will be Tuesday, the eighth. Our students will not start until the fourteenth. Again, the exception being our CTE students can start on the ninth. We will transport them for their in-person instruction, even though they're remote with us and even though we don't start till the fourteenth. They can either drive themselves, which is new this year, if they have the ability and are willing and permission of their parents, or we will transport them and we're working on those schedules and that information will go out to the families soon. We still have a hundred and eighty student days, everybody's, how are you doing this? We still have a hundred and eighty student days and four snow days built into the calendar, which gives us some flexibility. Some notable changes, December twenty-third was going to be the start of the, the winter break. That will now be a day of instruction for students and staff to make all this work. But it happens to be a Wednesday, so it's a remote day. March twelfth was gonna be a conference day, that's now a day of instruction and attendance for students and staff. And then we're moving K-6 parent-teacher conferences around. Both sets, December and March were supposed to be on Wednesdays, Thursdays and Fridays. But now with the way our cohorts are, that would have meant it would have hit the Thursday, Friday kids both times. So we're switching them to the middle of the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, both times. So that the Monday, Tuesday kids have a half day on Tuesday, the Thursday, Friday kids have a half day on Thursday. They all have a half day of remote instruction on Wednesday. So, the specific changes, September second was gonna be a superintendent's conference day before Labor Day. That's now being pushed to essentially, the eighth was already conference day, the second gets moved in the ninth. March twelfth gets moved to the tenth. So we're front-loading three of our superintendent's conference days. And then that extra student day is a staff-only day on the eleventh. So the eighth through eleventh, four solid days for our staff to prepare, engage in all that training. That is the whole purpose for all the changes that we're making. So again, it reduces us from a hundred and eighty-one student days to a hundred and eighty, which is fine, we have the four snow days. We are holding on to October twenty-eighth as a superintendent's conference day. We have events planned that day, which will be virtual PV. It also gives us that flexibility if we need to adjust off that plan and use it for, for other types of PV we can. Or it's a day that we can shift around based on other circumstances. Again, we're just moving those parent-teacher conferences, so the dates are there. This PowerPoint will up on the website you have in front of you. Again, December twenty-third, March twelfth, both days of instruction. And then, very importantly, the calendar's subject to change based on changing circumstances and executive orders. You'll remember that April break became a week of instruction last year as per executive order. In that case, we were able to shorten the end of the school year. Who knows what may come up or come about as a result of the public health crisis or any action taken by the government. Questions on the calendar? Put my mask on. I hope I knew a report.
I know, one report. Hey, and now we have reports, the SRO contract.
Okay, very quickly, what a break that was. Take a break. You'll recall at the July board meeting, I explained that we've been approached by the Ontario County Sheriff's Department about the potential for switching to a part-time SRO contract. They were looking to offer an early retirement incentive that would most likely impact the person assigned as our SRO. But they were interested in hiring that person back in a part-time capacity. Would we be interested in that, switching from seventeen hundred and seventy-three hours per year at a veteran officer's salary or ten hundred and forty hours at a hired back starting officer's salary? We did the math and saw that we would still have six to seven hours of SRO service on every day of attendance. That was even before we got into remote instruction, that's, you know, days when kids could possibly be here, we can have. We can have our current SRO here, six to seven hours a day. We talked very openly about that in public session back on July 15th. The board gave every indication that they were interested in pursuing that model. So it has taken a while for our attorneys and the county attorneys to work through the contract because they, like us, had their hands full with a few other things. And they also had to, of all things, work in education law 2D into the contract, which took a little while. But I received the finalized verbally agreed to contract today. So I put out a message to families and individual messages to required stakeholders that there will be a public hearing on Thursday at 6 o'clock via Zoom. So there will be a webinar Zoom link put up on our website. So I'll basically, myself and any available board members, it's not a board meeting, but myself and any available board members will be viewable by anybody who joins the Zoom meeting. I'll present the SRO contract, the changes, the impact. People who've been invited or any community member can join that and they can use the Q and A function to type in questions and we will answer those questions. And then we will have to have a special board meeting a week from tonight on the 24th, very briefly, for you to vote one way or the other on the SRO contract because we need to know whether that contract is going to be approved before school starts. And then that starts an entirely different clock on the timeline for our district safety plan because by law, the SRO contract, if it exists, has to be an appendix to the district safety plan before it can be approved. So it's been this chain reaction. I didn't think we were going to be able to fit it in this week, but I got the email this afternoon and was able to get things in place. So that's where we stand on the SRO contract. I explained in the email that went out to families today that we are entertaining the part-time model. We've been very transparent about that at the board level here in public session. And I want people to be aware of that. But I know, we have our administrators here, so if anybody wants to ask, but I've consulted with them as well. And given our knowledge of our current SRO and his knowledge of our operations and knowing that we can have six to seven hours of service on every school day, they were unanimous in their support of the model. And, you know, there was quite a bit of interest at the board level as well. So listen to that public input on Thursday and then go from there. Somewhat connected to the Ontario County Sheriff's Office. Last Wednesday, I was able to participate in a brief ceremony down at our bus garage where Josh Newton, a 14-year-old rising 10th grader, was recognized with the Do the Right Thing Award. You may recall, I think we told you this back, right as we were closing, on what turned out to be our last day of student attendance, March 12th. We had a bus driver experience a medical emergency while driving the bus with students aboard. And Josh took the lead with the assistance of some other students on the bus, came to the bus driver's assistance, navigated the bus to the side of the road, communicated with dispatch to get emergency services there, and just went above and beyond. So Bob Howland nominated, rightfully so, nominated Josh for the award. And his family was present, along with the bus driver, Sheriff Henderson, under Sheriff Frasca, Bob Howland, myself, for a brief presentation on Wednesday. So we're super proud of Josh and glad that he was able to be recognized and really grateful that the bus driver is now in good health, has recovered, and has actually been driving himself. So all's well that ends well, but Josh is very deserving of that recognition. One last piece, and Todd's here, he can answer any questions. Last year, we started what we thought was going to become a tradition of replacing the September Mid Lakes Journal newsletter with a district calendar. And it was a pretty big hit with our community. However, given the circumstances and so much influx about what events we are going to have and everything's pretty much on hold, we're raising the question, does it make sense to move forward with the district calendar? Or does it make more sense for this year only to go back to having a September newsletter and sharing information specific to the timeframe and then hope to return them in the calendar next year? Our recommendation is to go with the newsletter and just want to make sure that that makes sense to all of you.
I think it makes a ton of sense because we don't know what's going to be on the hard.
Todd, is it done yet?
Yeah.
All right, that's all I have for superintendent's report.
Okay, business. I'm going to take, to approve the thought emergency resolution A and B together. So can I get a motion?
Amber, we can have a discussion.
Yes, all right. I know I screwed up. Okay, for discussion. Public comment procedures. I know last time we kind of discussed that. Sherry, you kind of mentioned you were going to believe on that. Did you get any information? No, that's okay. We kind of, I can kind of over what we discussed last time. We were kind of discussing public comment procedures. Last time we went over possibly having to sign in a podium with a microphone. Discuss limit, time limits, one to two minutes per person, maybe not going over more than 30 minutes for public comment and display the norms either in, you know, I don't know, on the ball or in our handbook or whatever. That's kind of where we left off last time.
Anything you decide that could also be posted on the board page of the website as well?
Yes, 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 yes. And I was also wondering, you know, with COVID is going on. You do have, and it's not really public comment, but there is opportunity for people with your, on the website to contact you with questions.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, as per executive orders, you know, we do have the ability to be close to the public. As you can see, even in a space this size with the administrators present, it was difficult even to accommodate a group of this size. And we were reluctant to open to the public with the risk of having to turn away the 51st person. And finding a venue that could accommodate that number of people and social distancing. We're eager to return to open meetings, but until circumstances change, it's difficult. Public comment, I mean, I'd really open up the board for discussion as to whether or not you want to entertain public comment digitally. That can be difficult. It opens up some, you know, accountability and identification issues in terms of the source of the comment. That's really something for the board to consider and discuss.
So our original discussion was for when we went back to normal.
And we had hoped that that would be sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I mean, so as a board, we value public comment, right? You know, if we were to, if we were to make a slideshow with stipulations of where we are, of what our conviction or whatever we start with, man. Nevermind. Right, we value public comment. And we want to be able to hear, you know, as publicly elected people, we want to hear from the public about how we're doing or their comments on what we're doing. So that's what we want to do. So then, what you just said there, Amber, right? Is, you know, the ideal, of course, is that we're sort of staying with the school. That we're back to full in-person, life as normal type things as soon as possible. But we have to recognize then that that's not going to happen soon, right? So, so it seems to me, based on those stipulations, that we need to figure out some way of collecting public comments through a remote system. And I, you know, I can imagine things, but I don't know laws or processes for doing any of those.
Yeah, I mean, logistically, you could just set up a dedicated email address, like we've done reopening schools or staff questions at midlakes.org. We could set up board comment or public comment at midlakes.org. I do need to research the legalities of that because typically, most boards require somebody making public comment to identify themselves by name and address. So I would just want to do due diligence and check in with our attorneys on the legal components of that. But logistically, we could set up a dedicated email address and set a timeline, a due date, you know, that we will collect public comments. And it would have to be for a certain amount of time after the agenda was posted. So, you know, and I'm not saying it would have to be days in advance, but it could be earlier that day, whatever. And then there would also have to be clarity, and again, this is pending attorney's advice, but you know that there are laws governing what is appropriate for public comment. What is it? Personality issues, you know, calling specific people out by name, violating student confidentiality. These are all issues that if attempted in public, the board president would have to put a stop to it. So if we're going to entertain public comment through an email system, we'd have to be very transparent with the public that we would have editing rights or elimination rights, you know, not to share certain comments if they violated the rules. And then have a system in place of communicating that back to the person who submitted that comment. I have three or four spare minutes tomorrow.
I know.
I know, it seems like a big undertaking, however.
I can look into it. I mean.
I like the email option.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like that's what we have to do. I mean, it really does not, I mean, we're not going to take voicemails and play them. And so it seems, I don't think, it'd be pretty cool.
They're required to state their name and their address in the email, else we don't read it? Or, and, yeah, it has to meet the legal criteria.
Do we have to verify that that person actually sent it? I mean, that's what you're.
That's another problem, problem too.
Do we have to call that person?
Verify.
Because otherwise you open yourself up to somebody who doesn't live in the district. But I know Sarah was just telling me today that she would love to read public comments. That would be down there.
Right, well, I mean, that's some, that's, yes, thank you, Sarah.
But yeah, verification of identities, you know, there are steps that would have to be taken to ensure that they are both legally allowable and verifiable public comments from our public.
Do you know how other districts are completely?
Everybody's been in different situations. I don't know that. I think some have attempted to work through, whether it's their straight Facebook streaming. But again, that, anybody can start a Facebook page with any name or identity. So it raises some of the same questions.
Yeah, I would be hesitant to do a Facebook report or something like that. Email, or they have to state their name and address and do some sort of back checking.
I mean, ideally, you know, we get back in person as soon as we possibly can. But I agree, I mean, I know that there are people who miss having that opportunity to comment.
You look like you're thinking of something.
Well, I, the lesser of two evils would be the email option, although it seems funky. I think, I think some sort of a live stream thing is. It sets up to be less of a comment question type for the board and more of a chance to just kind of spot off. Trailing through the comments during some of the Q and A, 60 minutes of you and Todd, it got off the rails pretty quick.
You turned it off after 60 minutes? We're about a third of the way through.
I tuned you out after 60 minutes most of the time. So let me tell you what happened in the last 30 minutes during your last presentation. So I think that opening up a live stream is, is probably not ideal. I don't think it's what's intended for comment question. I also think that this is, like I've said before, this is a meeting to be held in public view, not necessarily for everyone with access to the website to just start complaining. I think that an email thing is a good idea, but we also have to, we have to be mindful of your time as well because I think the first time out, we're probably going to get, you're going to get an awful lot of emails. So to try to consolidate those, because a lot of them may be similar. Parents from grades K-3 had concerns about bus rides. Are we going to read every single one of those emails? Or are we going to say, "We got this many emails about that"?
It is a complicated issue. If you were, you know, if you had, were in public and had previously established, you know, timelines, you know, individual comment time limits and aggregate time limits, and there is an issue of particular concern in the public, I wouldn't foresee the board saying, "Oh, somebody already brought up that issue, so you don't get the comment." Everybody would typically have the opportunity to put their own particular, and spin or to echo and add weight to a previous comment by making a similar comment. So that's where it gets dicey. If you start to edit and make editorial decisions as to what's in and what's out, I think you've got a real problem.
I would agree, but it's considerably easier to email Sarah than it is to voice concern.
Right, but right now they don't have that.
That's right.
I would, I've told you many times that I think that we have to try to find a way in which we can engage with the public actually. And I don't know if that means auditorium or what it means, but I think it's highly important, but it's more important to be done right. And it's more important to be done right.
Yeah.
So is there a difference, B, like when you said live stream, I was just picturing actually live stream, like, is there a different space they could come in and actually be, you know what I'm saying? Like actually they're face live stream from a different space in the, in the building?
Live stream drive through.
Yeah, you know what I mean?
I mean, you could run an actual live Zoom meeting and record it. There are some data security vulnerabilities that come with that.
I was thinking like they had to drive here, walk up to. Standing six feet apart and addressing us.
I think about that.
I'd have to be complicated.
I don't know.
What's the current limit? Is it 50 total?
Right.
But if we establish like two minutes per person, if we establish some limits for an in-person meeting and we stick to those limits, whether they're emailing or whatever. So if their comment takes longer than two minutes to read, so I think that's, again, the transparency, making sure we're communicating out that these are new guidelines. We're going to, you know, you get two minutes per comment and public comment's going to be nowhere than 30 minutes. So we can have a maximum of 15, I guess it would be a minimum of 15 comments. So we can have a maximum of fifteen, I guess it would be a minimum of fifteen comments to be read per meeting. If some are quicker and shorter, then we might be able to read more.
Right, but the cutoff is the.
They'd have to be read in the order that they were received.
In the order they were received, yeah. Same as if they were in person, you know? If our thirty minutes is up and you didn't get a chance to comment, sorry, but those are the limits we set. So I think if we set some limits and stick to them, whether they're, and, and make sure that limits are something that can be accommodated, whether we're remote or in-person, just be consistent and transparent and communicate what those expectations limits are. That's my thought.
I think it'll be interesting to see what the attorney says.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to our attorneys. I, I know they have a team that's navigating all, they've broken up into teams by topic because basically every aspect of school law has been modified or impacted by this situation. So I'll find out who's specializing in board meetings and see what's. I, that's literally how they're doing it, so. And we'll try to find out, and maybe I can collaborate with Todd too, to do some research on how other districts are handling it, Todd. Perhaps you and I can collaborate and find out how some other districts are handling public comment.
Can you hear your brother this way? Listen to the game.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts?
Can I just make a recommendation because?
Yes.
To my comments earlier about the efforts of the team and it's eight twenty, um, any objections to excusing the administrative team? So thank you all for being here. Thank you all for your efforts.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. You're welcome to stay, we're not kicking you out. But, but you're, you're welcome to go home with your families. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
I'll send out a link for an eight AM meeting tomorrow. No, I won't. You can go if you'd like.
Sure, so far.
Bye Tracy.
Bye Tracy.
Bye Tracy.
You too, Tracy. Okay, September board retreat, I, someone's gonna have to remind me where we were.
Well, we punted from, we punted from August to September.
And how do you feel about September?
I think that October looks great. Um, I, I will, yeah, I mean, if there's no objections to us getting through whatever September is going to look like. Yeah, this board retreat is to set up goals, and right now our goal is to survive it, right?
Okay, now.
Are there any objections to that?
Just a little.
I, I know, I, I, I would like to, I mean, I'll do it, I mean, we, we can find a date in September.
Or even target an October date is possible. We just sit on the fact that we're all through the same batch.
I mean, do you want to do a, a weeknight or do you want to do a Saturday?
I prefer a weeknight, but I guess.
So my question, I need to let it out there, is a lot of Matt, just want to have Matt, whether it's to our board retreat or if he just to our. Is or goals, now. Just putting it out there.
Well, we've done both.
We do this too.
Yeah, we could, yeah.
Can I give you a break?
I appreciate it.
No, I mean, to Sherry's point, yes, I mean, if we're going to have a board retreat, we have to have an agenda for it, you know, what is our purpose? You know, and our board retreats have been more than just setting goals. And, and so, yeah, I mean, we could, more or less, me and Matt could have minimal involvement. Matt could have minimal involvement in, in, in doing it.
Let's post some dates on there.
Why?
Let's post some dates on there.
Well, what's better for everybody? Like, I say evening, but do you guys say Saturday, like?
Sat, I mean Saturday.
Saturday? What about you?
I think I'd, I think I'd probably go Saturday.
Like morning, is that what we're talking?
Yeah, usually we were doing eight to twelve.
Right, could get some breakfast brisket.
I could.
September twenty-sixth? September twenty-sixth.
I have, I have fiscal dream, I think. My government's dream this next year is Saturday.
How about the nineteenth? Nineteenth?
Uh, October.
No, so September.
September.
Sorry, that's Russian, sorry.
Omar Gala, right? Oh, Gala for the games? No.
Get that down the road.
Do you want to do the nineteenth?
I have just one question about the nineteenth. I agree with Jake, I think it's important that we do this. That is the Saturday after week one.
So is the.
Yeah, oh, it is, that is, that is, yeah.
We've, well, before, I think, it, I mean.
I'm gonna have to pass on October.
To Ryan's point, I agree with you, Ryan, we can't meet just to meet, like, you're going to be overloaded that first week. To have Saturday in the backdrop, I mean.
How about like October seventeenth? In October.
Yeah.
Yes.
That work? I have made an agreement for any Saturday number.
What'd you say?
I think all my Saturdays are free.
I know, I feel like.
Yeah.
Not a hell of a lot going on.
October seventeenth?
Yes, October seventeenth.
Tendatively eight to twelve, but we'll follow up. Just to block that out for now.
And our agenda is board goals.
Is there anything else that we should cover other than just your goals, our goals and that? We have before, I don't know, but so you think that's.
That's something, I mean, that's really.
All right, so I'm going to suggest, which, I'm going to suggest that.
I was just teeing it up for Jake.
I know your. A three-person subcommittee get together and pull up the tentative agenda and report back at the next board meeting. And I will be on it, given that I suggested it, I know how it works.
Uh, I can be on it too.
I'll serve with you guys. I got it. Those ports, the coach.
So Ryan, Jake and Amber?
All right, well, yeah. Matt, do you want to come to the meeting too?
Sure.
What?
Are we zooming this?
We're zooming.
Okay.
Yes.
You're, you're the chair, so let me know. Any more discussion, uh, the board approved? Okay, now on to new business. So I, um, I'm gonna try and block, so I'm just gonna take A and B for, uh, new business to approve filing for resolution. There are no objections, can I get a motion?
Sure.
And second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Hold on one second.
Sure.
Here, I'm good, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Um, on to, I'd like to block C, D and E. There are no objectives. Uh, may I have a motion?
So.
May I have a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I can't get that fourteen thousand dollars out of my hat for hand sanitizer. Where would that fall, does that fall in here?
Yeah, I mean, so basically what C is, is that's, um, in consultation with our external auditors, that was four hundred thousand dollars of fund balance from nineteen twenty that would have been, would have gone into our reserves to replenish our reserves. We're blowing it forward to cover COVID-nineteen expenses, including hands. And any other things, so yes.
Thanks.
I have a question, on to the rest of the plans, first thing, and then put a discussion around some of the methods. And heard some different things out there with sprayers and.
We have electrostatic sprayers, some, but we also have, um, state certified green products that are created to, to kill the virus. There's a very narrow lane of things that we can use. I don't want to speak outside of my expertise, I let Mike, I let Mike go, so he would be better able to speak to the specifics. But again, we're highly regulated in terms of what we can purchase.
It seems like there are a little more, yeah, supplies than others.
And, and then there are issues with hand sanitizers too, because everybody and their brother is making hand sanitizer and it turns out for some of them more like forty percent alcohol. But, you know, if you just keep in mind, you know, I think the fourteen thousand dollars speaks to, you know, the supply, but also the quality that we're having to purchase. And then if you think about, you know, I talked about, we can't, we can't order poly, uh, flexiglass sneeze guards. We have to do polycarbonate, you know, we have to abide by, and we have a Boise safety specialist who we consult with, who helps determine what we can use and what we can't.
And are there specific guidelines that could be made?
Yeah, the majority of it has to be done by our custodial crew by training. I have been working with our different bargaining units and our, our teachers will be helping us out in those tight transitions between cohorts changing rooms to do some light, you know, wiping down high touch surfaces. But any true cleaning, disinfecting, um, anything to do with our eating areas, bathrooms, and then your, your daily cleaning and disinfection is going to be our custodial.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Okay, I would like to block F through O. No objections, uh, may I have a motion? May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I have, I have a question, okay? I was just wondering what it was.
So, um, if you recall from graduation, we had those Midlakes masks. So they're a little bit more expensive, those aren't what we'll be buying for our, for our staff and it will be doing paper disposable ones for, for students as backups. But there was a lot of interest in those Midlakes masks, so we thought that it would be appropriate to give them to one of our student organizations as a fundraiser. And while we don't know what types of events our senior class will be able to participate in yet, we also know that their biggest fundraiser is the Fall Magazine Sale, which is going to be difficult for them to run. So, uh, the decision was made to give that, the mask fundraiser, K-12, to bring in those, to, to replace that fundraiser.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry, personnel. I was gonna go ahead and block A through P if there are no objections. May I have a motion? May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Guys, I have a question about E, mentors, just kind of what exactly is that?
So, um, that's education law now, uh, any, uh, new teacher is entitled to a mentor. It's part of the professional development process. And that's also now built into the contract, so if you're oversteer.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Um, and now, can I get a motion to go into fifth and second? May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.